Take real call, please.
Mayor Blazer.
Here.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Lee Tao.
Here.
Eric Daven.
Here.
Ben Gudrow.
Here.
Dad Kubisak. Jeff Maroots.
Here.
At six, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First time in the business is the approval of the report from November sixth Plan Commission meeting.
I'll second.
No, motion and second. Any corrections or additions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item two, which is twenty-three dash zero zero one one zero eight, Badger, Badger Land Service.
There is a street dedication of about three feet on Daly Avenue and about eight feet on Snyder Street. So Plan Commission makes a recommendation to council on street dedications. The combination does also meet all the zoning requirements, so we are recommending approval.
Commission with your thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve Plan twenty-three dash one one zero eight as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item three, twenty-three dash zero zero one zero six seven, John Kastner. Public hearing and action on a request for an amendment to the city comprehensive plan, specifically map seven dash two, future land use map, to reclassify a portion of fifteen oh one, Twenty Fourth Street South, parcel ID three four zero nine two zero zero, from a commercial land use classification to an industrial land use classification. What we'll do is we'll have Mr. Kearns or either of you introduce the item and then we'll open a public hearing for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I will likely talk generally about the next two items on the agenda because they do go hand in hand. They are separate action items and they do require separate public hearings, however. But again, generally, there's a very similar review amongst the two of them. You can recall several months ago Emmanuel Lutheran Church came in with property east of the Home Depot and requested similar action. However, there was a request to do a slightly different land use classification to government-public institutional and a rezoning to institutional. That was approved and Emmanuel has since broken ground on a new church and gathering center on that large parcel. It also involved a CSM to split the lots. And at the time, it was Emmanuel's intent to eventually sell and develop the northern portion of the site, which, as you can see here, is just above the blue portion. So previously, that this northern lot was not included within the previous comp plan amendment or rezoning. A developer has engaged with Emmanuel and is now making a request to do something similar. However, the ultimate goal is not for an institutional classification, but rather an industrial classification. So right now, as you can see from the map, it's, the current land use classification is commercial and it's proposed to be industrial. As we review this request, we look at a few things. We, we look obviously at the surrounding land use classifications and zoning and uses. And then we look at different sections of the, of the comp plan to determine whether or not it's consistent, injurious to the, the overall planning efforts within the, within the city. And we do have some concerns. I think chiefly is that typically most of our industrial land use exists within established industrial parks. So you can recall the West Side Industrial Park, the East Side Industrial Park, and then the, the paper mill, obviously, in downtown is also zoned industrial. Those are our prime pockets for industrial development. And so in, in kind of carving out this smaller chunk, which I believe is about nine acres or so, could, could potentially deviate from that precedent we have with locating much of our industrial area and uses in those industrial parks. Secondly, in, in moving on to the zoning review, you know, whenever you take a smaller lot and you rezone it for a specific purpose or where there's no other adjacent zoning, it can be considered spot zoning. This is a little bit bigger parcel, but still, I think, you know, maybe not as large as some of our other industrial users within the community and could, could be identified as, as that spot zoning. You can see that both from a land use standpoint and the zoning ordinance, that there is no surrounding industrial, land use classification or zoning or uses. I think the closest to it is, is the Home Depot, the retail use to the west. And, you know, with that being said, again, we have not found this to be consistent with the comp plan or the, the zoning ordinance and would recommend denial. Thank you.
Okay, let's, it's four oh nine, let's open the public hearing. I will call three times. So for the first time, does anybody wish to speak against this? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the rezoning? Or the amendment to the comprehensive, or the city's comp plan? And for a third and final time, does anybody wish to speak against? Okay, does anybody wish to speak in favor of allowing this change? Do you want to, if you want to come up and state your name and?
I will. First of all, thanks for your attention tonight to this matter. My name's Brendan Locke. I'm a small business owner from eastern side of Wisconsin. Myself along with.
Is the green light on the microphone?
It is. Can you not hear me?
I, I can, I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Myself along with two other partners, Kelly Windorf. Kelly was calling in, so I don't know if, is he on?
He is, he is on, yep.
Kelly, would you like to just introduce yourself and talk about your ties to the area?
Sure. Good afternoon or good evening, everybody. This is Kelly Windorf. I'm in Slinger today. Sorry, I was unable to, to attend. I'm more to Brendan's partner. I have a little bit of connection to the Rapids area. My family has had a property in the town of Rome for the last thirty years. So we're part of the Lake Arrowhead Association and spend a lot of time in the Lake Arrowhead area. So we're excited about this opportunity and looking forward to this afternoon's discussion.
Thanks, Kelly. So part of the overall plan, while it, I guess, is requested to be industrial rezoning, would be for part of the acreage north of the church to be redeveloped into affordable or obtainable housing. And then along with that, in between the housing and the church would be mini storage. Kyle, I believe you've got handouts for the commission to take a look at. So we have a schematic drawing and also I've got John Kastner, John, I believe, has called in as well.
He is also on.
Who can share with the overall plan because he's done a lot of the communication between us and the city for this proposal. John, are you on?
I am. Yep, I'm here.
So along with that. Sorry, go ahead, John.
Yep, just a quick introduction. I'm the civil engineer that worked on the Emmanuel Lutheran project to the south of here. And I'm working with Brendan and Kelly and Matt on this next portion to the north. So I've been talking with Kyle multiple times and with Kerry. Looking forward to sharing our plan with you and showing, you know, the merits of what we have proposed here and how it blends in well with the surrounding areas.
So just some background. As we approached the church, we had to have a letter of intent with them, which has been approved by their board. So the church does have some equity in this as well with the, with the land. And, and again, the board, the church board has approved the letter of intent and our intention is to not be synonymous with the church, but to also pay taxes. So it's not looked at as, as a partnership with the church necessarily in tax avoidance. To the north of storage, there's, like I said, an affordable housing component to it that we understand that there's a need for that in the Wisconsin Rapids area. And that's something that we have taken interest in. And the opportunity that we see in Wisconsin Rapids is something that's long-term. John and I had discussed whether or not it would be just housing and then that would be it. But that's not really something that is attractive to us. I guess, for a lack of better words, would be to purchase, sell the lots and then leave. It would be to work in conjunction with the church for a longer period of time. We've had interest from the church congregation to understand what the housing element would consist of. Interest from them for potentially moving in. Interest in the congregation for working within storage as we look to fill the space and the vacancies of those units to employ some of the congregation to help us with that. Just look at the rest of my notes. I guess, I guess I would open it up first before I wrap up if.
Why don't we continue with the public hearing and then once we close the public hearing, then we can probably ask some questions and I've got, I know I have a few for you, so.
No problem. I'll just lay the groundwork. We're, we're open and we would discuss also with the church, I'll just throw this out there, for land use restrictions, indeed restrictions. It's not something that we've envisioned, knowing that we had this conversation with the church of turning it into. I looked at the definition of industrial and I don't think I can argue industrial versus commercial and really what the true definition of it is. But if it's zoned that way, our intentions are certainly not to turn it into, I guess, what I would envision as being industrial manufacturing or anything like that, especially with the housing component. So really shrink down that area. And you can see with the development with the retention ponds and things like that, really where our vision lies in that part of the city.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
For a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of this request? And for a third and final time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? So four fifteen, we will close the public hearing and entertain questions from commission or anyone else. I guess Kyle, so I'm concerned, obviously, with it being labeled industrial because in twenty years from now, having that designation of industrial, somebody could put a plant there and that right behind the church, right next to assisted living. I don't think that's a pretty, pretty good use. So, or a good location for that, which concerns me on spot zoning. However, you know, storage units are a thing. We're, we're a saver society and so there's definitely a need for it. Is industrial the only zoning that will allow storage?
So right now, personal storage is a permitted use within the M one district and a conditional use within the M two district. M one is typically a lower intense industrial district. M two is typically your heavy industrial. So in this case, again, when we review the requests, we're not necessarily tying it to the use. Specifically, that's requested. We're looking at, you know, what are all the other uses in the event that it's rezoned that could operate here? So, you know, you think of, you know, manufacturing and other, maybe higher intense type uses that would be permitted here, right? If the, if the project doesn't move forward or, you know, half of it gets built or they, you know, the, something were to happen, it, it could, it could accommodate additional uses within that M one zoning district.
Storage units themselves, I would, wouldn't be opposed to. It's the other things that could be down the road or if something doesn't happen or if this falls through, then it's zoned for pretty much anything. I didn't know if there's another way that we could do that to allow the storage units, however, not allow any other industrial activities there.
Typically, when, when we have comprehensive plan amendments or rezonings, they're not conditional, meaning that we can't necessarily place conditions upon the approval. And, you know, they kind of need to be looked at on their face and not kind of what-if scenarios. Whereas, right, a site plan review is based on that specific review and that site plan review is occurring to ensure that it's not detrimental to the surrounding properties, it's meeting the zoning code and so forth. Right now, while this is a comp, concept plan, you know, we're not performing that review on this use and we're looking at the rezoning in its entirety beyond this use. I don't deny that, you know, having kind of these three uses, even with Home Depot and, and the, the assisted living and the residence to the northeast in the township, you know, isn't, isn't bad. I think, you know, from a intensity standpoint, personal storage is typically low intense. You don't have a lot of traffic. You don't have a lot of noise. You know, there, there is value to it and it could be a good buffer from the, you know, higher intense institutional use when there's church or other events or weddings that are going on to the south. But again, it's, you know, something that maybe isn't as conducive with regards to the rezoning. The applicant mentioned deed restrictions and that's something too, that would be more between private parties. Again, we, we'd not be able to require them to put a deed restriction on to solely utilize the land for this purpose. However, the two parties, the church selling the land and the buyers could entertain deed restrictions amongst themselves, but we wouldn't necessarily have any control over what those deed restrictions or covenants are with that sale.
And if we did approve the rezoning to industrial, what oversight does the city and planning have on what could be cited there? Or once it's rezoned industrial?
Yeah, you know, we, we've got a number of uses. I think the use table is in your packet for another item. If you reference the use table, it starts on page fifty-four. So if you follow the M one and M two district down the pages, you'll see the different uses that are either permitted or conditional within that district. And, you know, there are, there are quite a few in, you know.
And we would have to allow them if they chose to.
Correct. So really, the only oversight we would have if it's a permitted use is through the site plan review process, making sure parking, landscaping, access, stormwater, lighting, those types of things are met. We couldn't necessarily deny the use.
Correct.
Whereas if it's a conditional use, we do have the ability to take a closer look at the nature of the use itself and whether it's detrimental to the neighborhood or injurious in any way to the public.
But with conditional use laws changing or changed.
Conditional use laws changed several years ago, which makes it quite difficult to deny a conditional use.
Anyone else have any questions or comments or?
I had a question about other locations in the city that have, I know we're just talking about this classification, but that have storage units. I guess I could think of one on, I looked up here and that's in a commercial zoning. I guess is that just kind of grandfathered in or how would, is that one allowed?
Yep. So that would be grandfathered in. There, there's one on West Grand that comes to mind. So that, that's allowed to exist, but it would not be able to expand because it's considered illegal, non-conforming use. Can exist, but again, no expansion.
And then the classification that storage is in manufacturing, that's in, in ordinance or where is that identified?
So again, that's in your, in your zoning code. If you look at page, in the use table on page. Yes, fifty-seven, and you go down to general storage, which is fourteen, and you go down to personal storage facility fourteen point oh four. You follow that over to the M one district and you'll see it's permitted. And then the M two district, it's conditional. So those are the only two districts in which personal storage is allowed. You know, another, another option, which was discussed with the developer, but might be more difficult would be a use variance through the zoning board of appeals. To grant a use variance, you typically need to state or prove that you have no other use within the zoning district on the property. And in this case, I think it would be pretty hard to make that determination, that there's no other allowable use but for storage, right? That's the, the case that would need to be made at the zoning board of appeals. In this case, I think you could easily say that, right, zoned R two in its current state, you could develop it as housing, do a subdivision and so forth. We also looked at trying to do a planned unit development. Right now, planned unit developments specifically identify that you cannot intermix residential and industrial type uses. So if we looked at a planned unit development for the whole concept plan, we, we wouldn't be able to do that. It's, it specifically indicates that those two uses cannot mix within the planned development district. The last option would be an ordinance amendment. I think, again, that would be pretty difficult because an ordinance amendment affects the entirety of the, the code. So if, for example, the applicant made a request to place our personal warehouse, storage within the B two district and the plan commission and council reviewed that, they would be basically allowing any future requests to also locate within the B two district. So to think, you know, do we want that storage use on our main commercial corridors, West Grand Avenue, Eighth Street and other areas, you know, Baker Drive and so forth, that are zoned commercial currently? Because that's where they would be either permitted or conditional, likely with an ordinance amendment.
See, and I, myself personally, I don't look at storage units as an industrial type use. So to me, storage units in industrial don't make sense. And like I always say about this code that we, we always wrestle with, we really don't know that's affects until a situation comes about. And for me, I, I would rather see it be allowed within a conditional use of a different zoning code other than industrial. Cause I don't think, I, I don't know if industrial makes sense there, just because they hit spots like I went in, like I talked about before. But to be a conditional use within a different zoning district would make more sense because I don't think it's an industrial use myself. Like you said, it's low impact and it just doesn't, to me, doesn't fit in industrial. So I personally would be more comfortable with it in a different district that, that it could be reviewed then and allowed, but not in industrial.
One thought on the code amendment would be to allow it in, or to propose that it's conditionally permitted in like B two and then have supplemental standards, for example, that the lot has to be over a certain acreage or something like that. Because that would preclude, you know, like when you think of a commercial corridor, a lot of the lots are smaller and they wouldn't be well suited to self-storage. So maybe, maybe the idea of adding supplemental standards could help to make it more, you know, make more sense or something like that.
Can you create a new district that allows? Like a B six that allows for commercial storage units? And then the, they would have to be rezoned to a B six or whatever, just as, as my mayor brain working here, which is not, not a planner brain.
We somewhat have that district in the, the B five district, which, as you can recall, the, the business park is zoned, that B five mixed-use commercial woodlands. And we did an ordinance amendment, probably about a year and a half ago, to permit light industrial within that district. It hasn't really developed, I think, as we thought it would. There are a lot of vacant lots. So we, we opened it up to some light industrial type uses. Obviously, no one's constructed within woodlands yet. But, you know, that could possibly be a fitting district. But again, you know, whether it's the B two, the B five, you know, anytime you approve an ordinance amendment, you're opening it up to the entire district throughout the city. So certainly thinking about what other locations of the city have that zoning and would we want to see a storage type use there? As Kerry said, that could maybe have minimum size requirements, could have, you know, increased access requirements or screening requirements to ensure that it's maybe somewhat hidden if it is on a commercial corridor. That, that all, that all is, is doable and could be looked at. And I think if that's the, that's the comfort level that plan commission and ultimately council have, perhaps providing some more feedback or input to that would be beneficial.
See, and that's why I think its own zoning district would make sense. Let's say a B six. Cause then we just, okay, we want to allow this to become storage, so we, we make that B six because no other property in town would have that zoning district. So you come to a situation like this, which I agree, I think it makes sense and plan commission, council, we can rezone it to B six and B six is to allow commercial storage units. And maybe there might be some other thing down the road here that, that we don't know about that could be put in there. But we, but we wouldn't zone any of our properties to B six except for a rezoning to allow a storage unit or whatever that use is with whatever standards that are set up. Cause industrial doesn't make sense.
I agree with Mayor Blazer. Just, you know, storage units, you know, opening the door to a potential, you know, manufacturing facility. It just doesn't seem like, you know, it's really apples to apples to me. So are we talking about then a code amendment or just a new district? What would it, would it be a combination thereof or?
Yeah, the one, the one concern I would have with regards to a new district is it, it would set precedent to other uses that we haven't identified yet where we'd want to do the same, right? Well, if it's not identified or allowed in a district currently, let's just create a new district. You know, I'd, I'd hate to set that precedent with many warehousing in any future district or future uses with their own district. Nonetheless, it's something that we can, you know, we can research and see how other communities are addressing storage units. If they're, if it's changed over the course of time as they've become more popular, if they're being pulled out of districts and placed in other districts. We could certainly bring an ordinance amendment back or the applicant submitting that request and do some more research. But yeah, I, I think generally I'd probably rather try to look at supplemental standards, a conditional use within our current framework of districts versus a new district. But perhaps if other communities are doing other trends and addressing storage units with separate districts.
We can be the trend leader.
We could do that too.
Yeah, I just, obviously, I don't, I don't think A Street should be up and down in storage units either. So, you know, I think trying to preserve, you know, the businesses, but there is a need. And in this situation, it makes complete sense, given the location, the buildings, the build outs. But, but yeah, I, I think opening up to industrial, once we, once we do that, then, then we're stuck with that potential. But I, we need to come up with a way to allow this to, to, for these situations, allow, to allow approvals without creating, approving industrial to allow that because it doesn't make sense there.
And again, I'll agree with, with Mayor Blazer. Looking at this plan, I mean, it makes sense to me. You know, affordable housing with, with storage nearby. To, to, to lose this on a technicality because it's industrial, when I think we can all safely say it just doesn't seem right. We need to figure out a way to, to work around this. So I guess we'll take your, your best recommendation at this point in time to, to try to keep this moving forward, in my opinion. Because again, this, this plan makes sense to me and to, to lose it because it's classified as industrial. Just, it seems like it's something we can work around.
Any other thoughts or comments?
No, I also agree. I mean, you look at what our city has notoriously needed over the last decade was housing and you're solving a huge issue there. So yeah, let's try to work together and, and find a solution for this project to move forward because that's, you know, something that our community needs more than, more than ever is affordable housing. So, yeah, I agree, it doesn't really apply to a lot of the industrial stuff. And to put us into that, you know, situation where, you know, we potentially rezone it and then, you know, it doesn't go down that route and now we have a carve-out for an industrial district in what is commercial and residential, doesn't feel appropriate. So I think, I think you kind of found a. So I think, I think you kind of found a spot where we don't have something that applies to a project. And rather than just say no, I think, you know, this board and the city is looking into options, and I think this commission is, is interested in, in continuing to look into different options for this. So, yeah, I'm, I'm open and want to move forward.
So would the commission be opposed having Community Development Department bring something back for our next plan commission meeting, a solution? Or, or maybe a couple of options that we can get this parcel approved to allow storage units but not industrial?
Yeah, I think coming back with some options would be, be good, and I think we're all in agreement without voting, but saying that this is something that we want and want to work with it. So I guess whatever staff could come back with recommendations for us.
May I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, first of all, Mayor Blazer and the rest of the commission, Kyle, thank you for working with us. Kerry, a couple of times I've seen your emails, so I just wanted to say thanks for hearing what we had to say, and we really appreciate it. I know Kyle mentioned just timing and that there was another approval for something that was, I briefly heard him say something similar that never really turned into much. And one thing that jogged my memory as far as timing goes, this is something that we're looking to start in the spring. So I want you to know that we're not just planning to sit on this and have it be idle. So I just wanted you all to know that.
And that's why I think the hope is, next plan commission meeting in January, that we'll have a viable solution to, you know, keep things moving forward.
That's great. We appreciate it very much.
So we still, though, we have to act on the request to, to amend the city's comprehensive plan, specifically map 7-2, future land use map to reclassify a portion of 1501-24 Street from commercial land use classification to industrial use classification. So what are, we should probably have an affirmative motion. So I'll make a motion to approve the request to reclassify the land use, the commercial land use classification to industrial land use classification.
I'll second.
Okay. So then we have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Everybody kind of understand? Okay, I guess all in favor say aye. And those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So continue to talk with Kyle and Kerry, and then hopefully January we'll have some resolution to this.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then we go to item four, which is 23-001067, John Kessner, public hearing request for a zoning map amendment specifically to rezone a portion of 1501-24 Street South, parcel ID 3409200, from an R2 mixed residential district to an M1 general industrial district. Probably nothing further to add. I guess legally we have to hold the public hearings, so at 4:36 we'll open a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak against the request? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? And for a third final time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? Okay, for a first time, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the rezoning? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the rezoning? Last chance, third and final time, does anybody wish to speak? Okay, we can close the public hearing at 4:37. Commission, what is your wishes? I can make a motion that we approved, to approve the rezoning of that portion of 1501-24 Street South from R2 mixed residential district to M1 general industrial.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye. And those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Motion defeated. We're on to item five, which is 23-001092, Howell LLC, Tweet Garrett Mechanical, Inc., request for a site, plan review to perform site improvements at 2810 Jefferson Street, parcel ID 3400696. Community Development Department, please.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Blazer and members of the commission. So as you said, this is a site plan review application for site improvements at 2810 Jefferson Street. And the applicant is representing Tweet Garrett Mechanical. They're headquartered in DePere with four additional locations, one of which is here in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And they provide mechanical design engineering and construction services for clients. So the original building on this site was constructed in 1995, and it's a 17,500 square foot building. This business falls under the manufacturing definition of our, of our, in terms of use under Chapter 11 zoning, and the business is proposing a new parking lot due to the growing needs of the business. And they do have a parking lot to the side of the building, it's west of the building, and this one would be located south of the building, right near the front entrance. And here are some site photos, so this is that building. And so the parking area would be kind of what you see in the upper left-hand corner of that photo, near the building main entrance. So they do have one point of egress existing, and you can see that on this photo to the right. And there would be a U-shaped circulation, so there would be a second curb cut installed west of that one, and vehicles would circulate west throughout the site. It'd be one-way circulation with 45-degree parking. And dimensional standards as proposed are met. Ingress and egress will function adequately throughout the site. The newly proposed parking supply will include 15 spaces plus one ADA spaces to create a total of 27 spaces and two ADA spaces. And this will more sufficiently meet the parking need of the business. In fact, when you, when you calculate what our zoning code requires, this is right in line with what would typically be required, so it makes sense that they are in need of additional parking. The landscaping plan, Russ is here, and, and they have put plans together and have a landscaping plan. There are some changes, pretty minor changes, that are needed just to meet our points requirements and then our allocation requirements, and that can be pretty easily accommodated. There's a condition added requiring a revised landscape plan. Architectural standards don't apply, of course, and then lighting standards are met. They are proposing some additional wall-mounted lighting, but it'll be downlit, and we don't anticipate any concerns with lighting. So staff recommends approval with conditions. We are suggesting requiring a revised landscape plan that we, that internally staff could review and approve. Light just needs to meet the standards as outlined in the zoning code. There is an existing drainage swale located above the storm sewer within the public right-of-way along Jefferson Street, and there's just an engineering comment that that shall be maintained. All applicable right-of-way and stormwater permits shall be obtained for that additional curb cut and that work that would be done on the public right-of-way. All applicable permits through the city shall be obtained, and then just that staff would have the authority to approve minor modifications to the plans. And Russ, what Tweet Garrett is here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions, and then I'll turn it back over to the commission.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Tweet Garrett? No? Pretty straightforward, unless you have a desire to speak? Sounds good.
Motion to approve Plan 23-001092, subject to staff recommendation. I'll second.
Sounds good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We are on item number six, is discussion on zoning ordinance changes to simplify the review process for certain request developments and uses. This is no action item tonight. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. I don't know how many of you were around when we discussed in 2020 simplifying the zoning ordinance, but it was pretty detailed in regards to the use table and shifting things from, like site plan requests from coming to plan commission to staff review, moving some other things around, again, primarily to shift and make things a little more efficient when it comes to development. That ultimately did not move forward. However, I know there are, you know, some Alders, and we've received some feedback in community development on ways we can simplify our review process. And I think the approval item that you just approved today, right before this, was, was a good example of something where you have an existing use, existing parking, they need additional parking, they're hiring, they're doing well, and they had to come before this body, they had to wait, you know, their 30 days, they actually missed, missed the meeting in November. They, you know, they partially didn't have a full package, but their, their initial request was to try to get asphalt down before, before the cold and the, the snow flew in, and ultimately had to wait till December, come before this body, and seek approval. I think that's one way that we could potentially improve some efficiencies if, if that type of request, parking lot expansions, were to be reviewed and approved internally. And we've had several of them, you can recall, you know, a couple of commercial users, you know, Love Inc. was in 401, Subway, you know, usually there's maybe a half a dozen a year. And I think if, if that goes well, you could also maybe permit additions to existing uses, again, that are already established. They typically have driveways, you know, stormwater and all, many of the site details and requirements in place. And again, so the, the parking lots and the additions are typically less intense from a staff review standpoint, less intense from a plan commission review standpoint. So I had kind of floated this out for further discussion, in the event that the plan commission might have ideas, or the council wants to call out and, and wants to discuss different ways in which they think we can approve some efficiency in the review process when it comes to new construction, primarily relating to commercial. And again, this is discussion only, there's no ordinance before you at this time, but I think depending on the discussion, you know, over the next couple of months, we could draft something and, and try to simplify our review process.
Thank you, Kyle. Yeah, I personally agree. I, you know, I hear from a lot of people in the community, and I think there's, you know, like this very example, you know, I, I, they waited 30 days, they missed a meeting, could have gotten some work done. You know, I don't think it's about setting as many hurdles as possible in front of these people, to have them jump through them all and finally approve it. I think things like Kyle just brought up would be, should be allowed and be approved within their department. It's not like they're operating something out of the zoning code, you know, they're operating within the standards that have been set by plan commission and council. And so I just think to simplify and streamline things, we, I think we need to start doing a better job of that in, in this community to be able to help these businesses progress and get some of these things done, especially, you know, as we're running into winter here in construction. That's my opinion. Who else?
Yeah, I would have to agree. Anything that we can do to make it easier for businesses to expand and these little things that come before us and are often presented and voted on with no much discussion, I think, kind of shows that. So I would be for that as well.
Yeah, I agree. I think we just need to do a better job of working for them as government rather than create barriers and, yeah, I mean, the complex issues that we have, like these ones that we discussed tonight, you know, are, are much more in-depth, and I don't expect your staff to make, you know, a decision like that. Obviously, that's what we're here for to discuss as a group, but the ones that all fit within, you know, a matrix that you guys are able to put together and say, hey, 90% of what people are coming to us are, you know, these items and three or four things, yeah, like Mr. Daven said, you know, it doesn't really pay for all us to sit down again and, and discuss something that, you know, or approve something as a group when there's really not a lot of variancy between one request and the others. Obviously, when the complex issues come up, you guys have a better idea of when there's going to be a greater discussion on it, because you're not sure which direction we want to head anyways.
Everyone else good with that? Tom or Dennis, do you have any questions or concerns? Okay. Look forward to seeing something.
Yeah, I think we can, given the discussion and if it's discussed at council, spend the next month or two trying to craft something, maybe a different tiered approach, maybe calling out other things, you know, there, there are some exceptions within the code that come before plan commission that are usually always granted. So we can maybe call to mind those as well and either have a draft ordinance or, again, a memo identifying what the changes that could be made. And I don't think we need to necessarily rush this, but certainly, you know, before the next building season, April or May rolls around, it'd be nice to have this process in place so we can update it on our applications, on our zoning ordinance and so forth, so.
Yeah, maybe we can just have an agenda item of, you know, things that, that you approved, such as, you know, with the, and maybe not necessary either, just because we always normally approve it anyways, so. But no, look forward to something. All right. Anything further on that item? Let's move on to item seven, discussion on zoning ordinance change for mobile vendors to operate in residential zoning districts. Another no-action item. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you again. So this item, very similar to the last one, just looking for your feedback. Depending on the feedback and the conversation, we would potentially come back and draft an ordinance to account for this, and, and that is ice cream trucks. Right now, mobile vendors cannot operate within residential districts, and that would include an ice cream truck in a similar form that you see on the screen here. And I think it's somewhat nostalgic that, you know, growing up as a kid, there was always, you know, I heard today, the dilly-bar wagon. I've never experienced it, but.
Oh, you're missing out.
I, I think those, those can help to define our sense of place, and I think there's, there's a benefit to having those and allowing those within the community, similar, again, type devices as, as this. But again, right now, they would not be permitted. And I think that was because when the mobile vending ordinance was amended and we added in kind of the food trucks, we thought, you know, we don't want a taco truck sitting on a corner in a residential neighborhood for four hours of the day. And I think the ice cream trucks, like, or similar units like this were overlooked, and so that's why we didn't permit them. So I think if the feedback is supportive of this, we would come back and maybe define what a food truck is, and then maybe exclude it from, or permitted in the residential districts. We'd still require it to be, get a mobile vendor permit to meet all those requirements. There's a background check, there's insurance requirements, a fee and so forth. But then something like this could operate within residential neighborhoods.
So the, I think there's an ice cream truck that does run, run around, and so technically they're illegal at this point?
Yes. So we do issue a mobile vending permit for them.
Okay.
And they can operate within commercial districts and industrial districts. But it's, it's tough, you know, when someone's operating on the weekend for us to send out staff and chase them down and enforce it.
And I obviously have no issue with it, but I, to me, it would make sense to allow that type of mobile vending. Like I said, you've missed out on the dilly wagon, so. And I think having, that's what I think would be appropriate to run through residential areas, especially if they've been vetted with background checks and those kind of things. I just think that's part of, part of a community in a neighborhood to be able to experience that. So I'd look forward to seeing, you know, a change with that description, because I agree, having a barbecue shack trucks parked at the corner of an intersection wouldn't make sense, but in a neighborhood, but something like this most definitely would for me. Thoughts?
It works for me, because I'm in the same area you are, and we're seeing the ice cream truck come around, and it's neat to see the kids pile around the ice cream truck because they're not going to the ice cream shop, but when it does come around, it's, it is kind of neat.
Yep.
For the community and our area, I don't.
Exactly.
I'm also open to allowing this type of mobile vending.
Thank you. So we look forward to seeing something come forward on that. Okay, we are on to item eight, which is the discussion on downtown plan initiatives. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you again. We're nearing the end of the agenda, I'll try to be quick. I wanted to note this because it is going to. I wanted to note this because it is going to Property and Finance tomorrow, and ultimately Council, and that is to update our downtown master plan, our riverfront plan, which is about ten years old, twelve years old? I think it's from two thousand nine. And a lot has happened in the downtown over that decade, and I don't think the plan necessarily reflects, you know, today's date and the framework and the design of the downtown and the changes that have occurred within the downtown, and I think it is necessary for us to update that plan. So we applied for a twenty-five thousand dollar economic development grant for the county. That was awarded and approved in November in the county's budget. We then hoped to couple that with a fifty thousand dollar TIF allocation out of the downtown TIF seven district, which is identified in the downtown project plan, for a total project cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. And then Kerry and I would try to take a hybrid approach, where we would try to organize the public engagement component of the plan ourselves to try to save some costs, and then submit an RFP, request for proposals, for the more detailed design, rendering, you know, mapping component of the plan that you find in our current plan, which is showing up here, because we don't have the expertise nor the software to, you know, make the maps and the renderings. And then, obviously, I think the Plan Commission would play a crucial role and kind of be the body that would review different sections. We'd inform the Plan Commission along the way, have public meetings inviting the Plan Commission, very similar to the downtown paper mill plan and the involvement there. We might have a steering committee or maybe rely on Plan Commission to serve that role. And it could start as early as the spring if Council approves that allocation in December here. With that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions you may have about the plan or the project. There was a more detailed sheet that Kerry put together, thank you Kerry, that identifies our hybrid approach, the timeline associated with that approach as well. And overall, I think it'll be about a fifteen to eighteen month timeline that we're forecasting.
Any questions?
Oh, the finance, sorry, it was in the, that sheet that I'm referencing was in the finance and property packet.
Sounds good, thank you. Anything further? Any questions? All right, we look forward to seeing this develop. We're on to item nine, adjournment.
One other item, sorry, Mayor. So our next Planning Commission meeting falls right on the New Year's holiday. So it is scheduled for Monday, January eighth, at four o'clock in lieu of the first, and there is actually a conflict with the Parks Commission, but there's a lot of other meetings, so that date we still thought was the best date. So if there's any conflict with that date, if you don't mind emailing me just to verify that we have a quorum, but it's just the Monday following what our regular meeting typically would be, at four o'clock also, and it would be in this room. Thank you.
So you'd have the same time as the Park Committee?
Yes, and I know that's a conflict for you, and I believe also for Commissioner Tao, but there are a lot of meetings, there's court meetings and stuff just because of the regular routine meetings, so hopefully we can still work with that, and community media is aware, and they would broadcast one live, and then they'll provide the other one later.
And Lee and I can kind of figure out, make sure there's a quorum for both, and attend whichever one we need to attend.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, so email if you have any concerns on the eighth. We're on to item nine, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you very much.